Okay, everybody, it is 7:03 and we've got forum. Um, I'm gonna take an opportunity because there's a lot of folks in the room and online that I've never before and that maybe haven't interacted with the portable housing committee before. Um, so I actually am going to turn my camera on so folks at home can see my face if you want to see it. Um, and I want to, I want to welcome you and take a moment to introduce myself and the affordable housing committee. Um, while we wait for the last few people to trickle in and before we get started. So I'm S J Doobie. Uh, I joined the committee in July 2020 when, um, because of the pandemic, we could participate in local government via Zoom, which meant I started attending meetings during my kids bedtime routine. Um, and while I was rubbing backs, um, when Bob Robbins left the chair of this committee in 2021, I took over his chair and have been ever since. Um, other members of the committee include Stacy Burnett, Wayne Ellis, Eric Klipman, Richard Hankins, Frederica Keating, and our newest member Chuck Lacy, who was just appointed February 16th. Welcome to your first meeting Chuck. Um, and though I'm sure many of you are aware Chuck is not new to this conversation. Uh, but he is a new committee member and we're happy to have him. Um, so one thing I want to talk about is just as a committee, what we're talking about when we say affordable housing in Jericho specifically. We're talking about ensuring more housing choices are available to more people and in a way that makes sense for Jericho. So those housing choices might include shared equity homes with Champlain Housing Trust or subsidized rentals like what we have with Jerry Hill. But it also means regular old rentals, smaller and more modest homes, sized homes, duplexes, uh, multifamily homes. Right? More people means people other than the most affluent who currently are the ones able to afford moving to Jericho right now. So that means working class and middle class. That means first time home buyers, young families who need just one more bedroom. Um, and seniors who'd like to downsize and stay in Jericho. Currently it's hard to welcome or keep those folks here in Jericho. So basically the quick and dirty of it is we're talking about homes that are maybe $400,000 and less. Okay. Under our charter, the select board has tasked the affordable housing committee with a couple of different things. One, data collection and analysis, advising the town's regulatory bodies, working with local state and regional entities, community outreach and advocacy. So since I started as chair and over the past two years, we've been working hard to provide information on the state of housing in our region and then in Jericho specifically. Um, we've been working to provide that analysis to both the community and the select board. And so you can see the results of our ADU survey and our housing needs assessment on the website. Also on the town's affordable housing website is a recording and the slides from our presentation to the select board in August, which was really a culmination of all of that work where we described the current state of housing in Jericho and provided an everything but the kitchen sink list of all the potential actions that were available to the town to address the issue. So since defining the problem in August, what we're currently working on is making recommendations concerning the size of the response, how we think the response should look and which of those potential actions we think are the most suited to Jericho. Jericho is not Williston. Our housing crisis looks different than it does in Williston and our response to that problem will look different. I've got one right here. Thank you. Um, and so I'm expecting that we'll be making
Recording in progress.
Those, thanks. Those recommendations, um, to the select board in the spring, so in a couple of months. This year, in addition to switching our focus from kind of analyzing the problem and focusing more on the path forward, we're also kicking off a broader engagement campaign, both, um, to reach out to community members, but also specifically with the conservation committee and the land trust. I personally believe that for a town like Jericho, it makes sense to include conservation priorities from the start so that we can be really intentional and strategic about the impact of our development, both for the good of our community and also on our natural resources. Um, so that's kind of who we are, what we've been doing, what we plan on doing. I'm really, really proud of the committee's work and I'm really proud because I think that the select board has heard us. Um, they seem to be carefully considering the information that we've compiled and shared thus far. Their recent purchase of Railroad Circle, for example, signals to me that they care about the housing problem, that they agree that the town does have a role to play in responding to that problem. Uh, and the Affordable Housing Committee is available as an advisory, in an advisory capacity to continue to be a resource for both the select board, um, the Jericho Community Development Board, the Planning Commission, um, as they develop a strategic plan for Railroad Circle and moving forward. But I do want to make sure to underscore that there are many kinds of things that need to be done in order to address the housing solution and in order to encourage and make possible development of small and modest homes in Jericho. Uh, it's going to take lots of different kinds of actions on many different fronts. Okay, so I'll stop selling the affordable housing committee to you all. On the topic tonight is a discussion on, uh, the update to Jericho's town plan. So this is an opportunity for the planning commission specifically to hear from you all about how we as a community want housing in Jericho to look over the next 10 years and into the future. Um, so for those of you who may not be aware or who haven't attended any of these working sessions in the past, um, every eight to 10 years, the planning commission is tasked with updating the town plan, which acts like a kind of map of where we want the select board and the other regulatory bodies of the town to take us over the next decade. At this phase, um, my understanding is that the planning commission is really gathering information, which they'll then use to write a draft. Once they have that draft, they'll present it back to the town to get feedback and then work on finalizing it to present again to the town and to the select board hopefully for adoption. So this is really the drawing board stage and our opportunity to provide feedback and get in on the, on the ground floor. So tonight, uh, we're going to start with David White, who is the consultant who's working with the planning commission. Um, he'll do a presentation about, um, the current town plan as it stands now, um, the state of housing and we're in the context of that town plan and then set the stage for what, um, we can be thinking about in terms of the, the update and the rewrite. Not only is David, um, an excellent, uh, excellent partner to work with and has a lot of expertise, but he's also a Jericho resident, so he does have skin in the game and he will be facing all of you in the grocery stores. Um, so feel, feel confident in David's investment in this project. Um, after that, we'll open it up to public comments specifically for, um, updating the town plan as it relates to housing. There'll be a three minute limit just to make sure that we get to everybody. Um, and if at the end you still have some more things to say and there's time, we'll come back to repeat customers. Um, and then after that, and I should say too, if they, if for some reason you aren't comfortable participating in kind of a public setting or, um, we run out of time and you had a bunch more ideas of please feel comfortable following up with Linda Blash, our town planner who's sitting on my right here. Um, we'll make sure that her email is easily available to you and it's also on the website. And David will go through a host of other ways that you can, um, interact with the planning commission and provide input on the town plan. After the public comment section, we'll go, um, we'll circle back to the affordable housing committee and the planning commission members um, to have a discussion about what we've heard, throw around some ideas, consider suggestions, um, put things into kind of a broader context. At the end of that town plan working session, you all are welcome to stay, but if you duck out afterwards, I won't take it personally. We'll take whatever time is remaining, um, to just cover some affordable housing committee business. This is our regular committee meeting time. Um, and I will be opening up that section of the meeting with another public comment. If you have things that you'd like to say outside of, uh, town plan stuff. Okay, I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to turn it over to you, David. So thank you so much and thank you everybody for being here.
Thank you, S J. I'm very happy to be here and I'm going to share my screen here so that, uh, the folks can, both in the room and online can follow along. Um, uh, as S J said, my name is David White. I'm a professional planner. Uh, my firm is Sterling Mountain Community Planning and Design based here in Jericho. Um, I've been a, a practicing urban planner in Northern Vermont for the last almost 35 years for as long as I've been a resident of Jericho. Um, and, uh, tonight we're going to talk, uh, about, um, the, the update to the town plan and specifically about housing. Um, and you know, the tonight's conversation and a lot of the information I'm going to present really is built on the, the great work that the affordable housing committee has already done. You've already gotten the community so far down the road in collecting data, understanding what some of the issues and challenges are and what, and what some of the opportunities are that I feel really excited about how the town plan can, can wrap around these specific issues.
Can you bring your
Grab your microphone closer.
Absolutely. Try that. Okay, so, um, tonight's presentation, um, involves a little bit of background information around, you know, the setting the stage of, uh, what's a town plan and, and how does all of this fit? Um, kind of laying out what the problem is and then we'll kind of get into the Q and A and talk about, um, perhaps what, what some possible solutions are. So, uh, as S J mentioned, uh, tonight is part of a series of work sessions, uh, that the planning commission has organized around a variety of different topics. Uh, this is the, the second focus work session. The last one was a specific to land use, more of a, of a, a broad category. Um, and now we kind of focus in on, on at least two of the most important, uh, elements of the plan and that's housing in the local economy. So housing of course is tonight, local economy we'll talk about, uh, and on April 18th and we'll have the final one in this series in June. In the middle there, we're planning a large community forum on May 3rd in the MMU library, um, where we hope to, uh, get a large turnout from the community and can talk in more detail while, around a wide range of topics. So all of this information is on the town's website and as will be more detailed, uh, going forward. Finally, also tonight's presentation will be on the, the website, um, within the next couple of days. So don't worry about not being able to catch everything on all the slides, uh, because there's a lot of stuff packed in here and you can, can follow up and look at it, uh, at your leisure. So I want to just start with, you know, the, the import of housing. So Maslow's theory and the basic hierarchy of human needs, housing fits right in there with food, uh, with, uh, security uh, and sleep. It's, it's just fundamental to what makes, uh, communities, uh, vibrant and, and healthy. Um, it's really important, you know, we all live here, we all, uh, love our community, we know our neighbors. It's, it, it's the foundation for that sense of community. Um, it's also the single largest asset and investment that many households have. And it's critical to being able to pass on intergenerational, an intergenerational wealth. Um, this is something that, uh, anybody who kind of follows the housing conversation, the housing debate, uh, around the country uh, understands in the context, in the context of equity and, and how, uh, they various, uh, federal and state, uh, policies and land use policies have discriminated certain segments of the population. And this really gets to the ability to transfer that intergenerational wealth, which is just critical. Um, and of course it drives our local economy. It's the creation of housing, it's the, it's the maintenance of that housing and all of the shopping for goods and services that the residents of that housing, um, take advantage of every day. Within a broader context, uh, municipal plans, uh, as, as Jay mentioned, uh, required under state law to be updated every eight years. You don't need to have a town plan, but if you do uh, and you want to regulate land use, um, you need to have one and it needs to be revised every eight years. So this plan is being revised on that time schedule and municipal plans need to follow, uh, some broad goals and policies that are established in statute. So I've pulled out those that are specifically pertinent, uh, to housing, uh, out of the statute as well as the state, uh, smart growth principles. And the long and short here is that, um, from a land use perspective, the, the state's objective is um, compact village settlements surrounded by working rural, uh, and natural landscapes. That's the Vermont pattern. That's what we see. That's what, uh, we love about the state that we live in. That's the objective we're trying to achieve. Um, and when it comes to housing, that, that the housing meets, that meets a diversity, uh, of social and income groups um, across our communities and it is largely concentrated in those mixed use centers, uh, where possible. Um, on a regional level, uh, the regional planning commission as well as a number of the for-profit and nonprofit housing community uh, in Chittenden County have put together a campaign called Building Homes Together, uh, which is in its second iteration, I think now, so setting a target for, uh, the creation of housing, uh, in Chittenden County. Uh, the desire to build 5,000 new homes, um, within the next, I think it's five year period. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, um, to address the, the housing availability and affordability challenge that we face here in Chittenden, in across Chittenden County. The current town plan then reflects that's, uh, the state policy and the, and the regional objectives here. These, this language comes right out of the existing town plan, protecting the natural environment and rural character, the historic character of Jericho, concentrating new development in the three village centers, those being, uh, Jericho Corners where we are now in Town Hall, uh, Riverside, uh, which, uh, might otherwise be known as Underhill Flats for some folks, uh, bordered with the town of Underhill uh, and, uh, Jericho Center, um, up with the green and, and, um, the community center up there. So these are the goals of the town plan and these are the current housing goals that are in the town plan, just again as a point of reference. Uh, the current land use pattern across the town here, I've, I've blown up, uh, to highlight the three village centers and that the yellow areas on the map show residential areas, the green are largely, largely agriculture and forest land. The red is commercial properties, but a little over 2,000 occupied housing units. Um, mostly single family detached homes, mostly owner occupied, uh, mostly on lots under six acres in terms of the numbers of them. And almost, and over three quarters of the town's grand list is supported by, uh, residential, uh, properties. Um, from a land years, land area perspective, about half of the land area in Jericho, uh, is, uh, in a residential use. And three quarters of those lots are more than six acres in size, largely occurring outside of the village centers. Only about 5% of Jericho's land area is commercial, which, uh, is a different conversation that we'll, we'll get to, um, in subsequent talks. So before we dive in to the deep end of the pool here, uh, around housing, I want folks to kind of step back and think, reflect a little bit on, these are two questions that, uh, we posed in our, uh, question of the month, which is a, a, a series of questions we've kind of presented to the community asking for feedback us, um, around, about people's feelings and, and concerns and objectives for Jericho. So what brought you to Jericho and what keeps you in Jericho? Um, so I ask you to kind of stop and think of, think about that for yourself right now, but also very specifically think about, do you have a family member or a friend who would love to live in Jericho? Or do you have or know of a business that, uh, where finding housing has become a significant challenge uh, for current or future employees? I think that's a really important frame to have in your, in your mind here as we talk about what are the challenges that we're facing and as a result, um, what are some solutions that the town really ought to try to pursue? So first challenge being demographics. Jericho's really not growing. Um, the top slide here shows population change over the last two decades, uh, with our neighboring communities Essex, Underhill, Cambridge, and then Chittenden County as a whole. And you can see not much going on as far as, uh, population change in Jericho. Um, we are getting older, just like every place else in the state, just like every place else around the country. Uh, we are getting older and we will continue to get older for the next at least three decades. That has significant, presents significant challenges and, and opportunities for communities, um, uh, as they kind of evolve and progress in the future. Um, and our average household size is getting smaller. Again, a national, um, a national phenomenon. You can see that in 1990, it was average household size was three people per household. Um, today it's under two and a half. Um, this has implications then for the kind of housing that people want, the kind of housing that people need, the kind of housing that people can afford. And that's not necessarily what we, sorry, what we have on the ground. Got to catch up on my notes here. Uh, the supply. So that really dovetails into, we've not grown very much. We're not creating a lot of new housing either. Uh, the slide in the, in the upper left-hand corner shows, uh, the, the rate of change in, in the occupied housing supply, um, going back, um, to, uh, I think that's 1980. Um, we went from three more, three and a half percent of an annual increase in the number of housing units down to less than, or almost, uh, half a percent, a, a significant drop. So that production of new housing is not keeping up with demand. Um, the housing market, uh, is not producing the variety of housing options that are needed. Virtually all of the housing that has been created and that we have in Jericho are large owner occupied, single family homes, which are great for families, um, particularly growing families with kids. Um, but not necessarily for everybody and not for everybody at every stage of life. Um, and, and S J, um, uh, spoke to a very important concept when thinking about housing and housing policy and that's choice. At different stages of life and different configurations of families and households, different income levels, people need to be able to have choices and where they can live, um, where they can live, how they can live. Also with transportation, we need to have choices in how we move ourselves around our communities because driving doesn't always serve our needs, walking certainly doesn't always serve our needs, but the ability to be able to do both of those things is really important. Um, most of the housing in Jericho is, uh, owner occupied. There's very, very few rental housing units. Uh, in, uh, in Richmond, there's twice as many or the percentage is twice that in Jericho and Essex, it's three times that. Why is rental important? Rental's important, uh, for all kinds of people. And it's not just, uh, young people who are looking for rental housing. It's also older people who are looking for rental housing. Again, as, as folks are aging in place and moving out of that large single family home where they raised their families, many folks are choosing to rent again. They rented, you know, when they first, uh, got out of, out of school and started, uh, their working lives, but many people are returning to renting and renting provides a very important, uh, option uh, and flexible option for lots of different families. This is again about the choice. And the cost, uh, price of both new and existing housing is prohibitive. And that's particularly for first time homeowners, um, for families with children, for folks that are in the workforce. Um, and a lot of this data comes from the, the Jericho Housing Needs Summary that, uh, that the Affordable Housing Committee put together and data that is on the Vermont Housing Finance Agency's website, uh, which is just a treasure trove of both, uh, housing and socioeconomic information around the issues associated with housing. Um, 16% of Jericho households were cost burden, meaning they paid more than 30% of their income, their household income and housing, much higher and a smaller proportion of that is more than 50%.
And if I could just point out, because the data doesn't always keep up with the reality on the ground. So their data, you know, they collect it and it takes time for them to synthesize all of it. In 2020, property values in terms of market values were 25 to 35% lower than they are now. So if the median price in Jericho was 370, then it's closer to 500 now. Because that's just what's happened since the pandemic and with property values and not just Jericho and not just Vermont, but it's been a, a pretty dramatic change. So I know S J threw out a number before of like looking for homes under $400,000. The, the number we're seeing now, the median number is 500.
So this is, this is, uh, uh, 2022, the most recent data that just, just came out, uh, showing the median home sale price in Jericho of all homes of all types of $460,000. That's $190,000 more than it was just five years ago. And, and I think it's more than $100,000 than it was just two years ago. So it's not only really high, the, the cost of housing is really high, but it's growing really fast. So it's getting even harder, progressively harder for people to be able to find, uh, a suitable place to live, uh, in Jericho.
Ask a question on that?
Hmm.
Those are, uh, in looking at those numbers, it's, it's rather startling. Um, what is the percentage of existing home stock, housing stock in Jericho that sells in an average year? Not new, just existing builds.
Turnover.
Turnover.
Yeah. Sarah, do you have a sense of that?
I mean, I think in Jericho, we sold 50 houses last year and let's just say 10 of them were new builds. So what's 40 as a percentage of 2,084? Less than half a percent.
Less than a hundred percent.
Nobody wants to leave, you guys. We love it here.
So nobody wants to leave.
And, and the people who want to downsize don't want to leave. They want to stay here.
They don't have the option.
Yeah.
To age in place.
The transit jam.
Yes, we're, we're rubbernecking things.
Exactly. Yeah. Well, we'll get to that. So when you look at the cost of housing, then you compare it to what people actually earn. You know, again, the disconnect here, uh, the faint line across the middle here is, uh, what VHFA describes as a housing wage of $61,760 in our metro area. So that is the wage that a family of two or a family needs for a two, to afford a two-bedroom home uh, in Chittenden County, or I'm sorry, in this metro area compared to the wages that these different occupation groups, um, provide. There are very few that cross that line.
Can you read some of those that are referred to?
I can. Yeah, and this is where the, the beauty of being able to, to dive into a lot of this stuff, uh, on your own. Uh, so this one is cashiers. Restaurant cooks, customer service. I'm not sure what a compliance officer is, but that they get paid more.
This is all going to be available, right?
What's that?
This is all going to be available where?
Yeah, on the, on the town website. And this, and this data comes from, uh, the, the HFA website. Uh, accountants and auditors, architects and engineers. So they're broad categories.
You want to, you want to, you want to think of where, where teachers come in there, for example?
Um.
They're, they're not on the graph, but, but you can, you can extrapolate, like if you know a teacher, you can extrapolate whether they're, you know, they, some of them may above, maybe above the line and, and some of them will be below the line.
Right. Community and social service occupations is this group here and, and again, I'm not, I don't know exactly what fills each one of these categories, but, um, I think you get the point that there's not a lot of, uh, jobs that are paying enough money in order to afford, uh, the housing costs. Uh, jobs that are paying enough money in order to afford uh, the housing costs, not just in Jericho, but in Chitting County.
That's that's what I was gonna say, that's Chitting County and the housing costs in Jericho are higher than than that line there.
Yes.
Which is just Chitting County.
Yeah, exactly. And exactly, right, so we just saw how much the median price of a house has grown in the last two years, five years. Um, this doesn't, this data doesn't reflect that change and didn't likely change by that amount uh, by a long shot. So. Why do we, why are we confronted with this? So housing is a very complex uh, issue, there are a lot of interrelated. Uh, reasons why uh, we're confronted with this housing crisis, so I'm not going to get into all of those, but. I just highlight a a few things that are things that particularly the town. Uh, can be involved through its policies in uh, in the town plan and ultimately. Uh, investments the town makes and and regulations that that the town uses uh, in order to um. Address housing demand, um, one of the first things is a lack of community infrastructure. You know, when we build houses uh, on large lots with individual wells and individual septic systems. It consumes a lot of land, um, you need to have separation distance between your, from your well to your leach field for a good reason. Um, and you just can't have as many houses in the same area. So by creating community infrastructure creates the opportunity to create uh, smaller houses. Uh, that are closer together, really fulfilling the pattern of development that we've already found in our village centers. Um, we have a lot of compact uh, settlement right here in Jericho in our villages and you see it across Vermont.
And and most of it's outside of, most of the compact development is outside of.
And there is compact through uh.
There's more houses on the foothills than Jericho Center on half the land.
Yep. So the lack of community infrastructure is a challenge here, it makes it difficult to build more housing. Um, as does uncertainty and barriers in the the both the local and state regulatory processes. You know, if somebody's investing a tremendous amount of money to try to build uh, a new neighborhood someplace. Uh, they need to know very quick, they need to know right upfront, what can they do? So they can figure out how much it's going to cost and whether or not they're going to be able to bring that product to market. Uncertainty is what really kills most development projects, um, so. Having a predictable review process, having clear and objective review standards uh, and having. Uh, development standards that uh, right are right sized to the villages where they exist, again, can you build what's already here? That's that's always the question, and that's the things that we need to think about um, going forward. So we're really faced uh, with a perfect storm, right, growing businesses can't get workers. And I don't know about you, but my kids can't find a place to to. Buy in Jericho where they could move back here and raise their own families. Um, and a lot of businesses are really, really struggling attracting the workforce. Um, folks can't find a place to live, period, let alone places that that uh, they can afford. People are taking jobs, but then having to decline them because they can't find a place to live. That is, you know, that that's what's affecting places like the hospital, places like our stores, places that we frequent every single day. Um, there are no starter houses, uh, both in terms of size and cost for young families looking to kind of get their foothold into. Uh, into that marketplace, there are no places for older residents to be able to downsize and then still age in place. We don't want to leave our community, so we end up. Being stuck where we are because there's no other choice. Um, and that means that the housing stock that we have today isn't being recycled to the next growing family to move into. Um, and the housing that we're building is too big for those that are looking to downsize and too expensive for young families, so. We have all of these factors coming into play that ultimately we need to try to tease out those those that. We as a town have control over in order to uh, to nudge the market in the direction that we we need it to go. Uh, to build the the vibrant and diverse community that we all want to have. So why is this important? Again, a lot of this begins to kind of repeat itself though, but it's. Having a stable and a healthy workforce in an in an economy. Uh, creating the demand for new and expanding businesses in in the surveys we've done, people want to see. You know, more places to eat, they want to see more shops, they want to see more services, while those businesses will go where the people. Where their customers are, you bring more customers, you create more business opportunities, mentioned the aging in place. There's stabilizing of property taxes when you have more payers and a diversity of payers. Uh, into the grand list uh, is is better for everyone. We have declining school enrollments um, here in the district. Um, those that then has tremendous implications on our ability to uh, maintain the high quality schools that we have. Uh, and having more people to just participate in in uh, community organizations like. Uh, town government, uh, like like nonprofit organizations, like uh, social and recreational organizations. You know, it, a lot of the work falls to the same, right, the same people who are invested in a variety of different organizations. Uh, bringing more people, you have more opportunities, um, and depending on how new development is built. You can create much more efficient, you can get much greater efficiencies in public services and public infrastructure. Rather than having twenty miles of of utilities, you could maybe serve the same number of houses in ten or five. Um, uh, you can increase the affordability because again, you're creating a greater diversity of housing opportunities. For um, a variety of people. Um, you can decrease the energy demand and the consumption, particularly with uh, with new construction that can be built to. To very different and much higher standards than a lot of the older houses were built to. Um, just because of the uh. Greater efficiency of the materials that are available to people. Less traffic means more transportation choices when people can live in more compact settlements, there's more places to walk to, there's more places to bike to. Therefore, there's less traffic in those places because people are seeking alternate modes. Um, and that means that people then are healthier because they're more active, they have those opportunities to be more active rather than. In order to get anywhere, you have to get in your car and drive, um, having those options to walk and bike. Or those uh, access to your daily needs is is critical and all of that then leads to a healthier planet. Because all, most of these things in one form or another uh, affect our consumption of. Uh, of carbon or consumption of fossil fuels, um, and. Our ability to to combat and uh, and address issues associated with climate change. So key housing questions for the new town plan then with all of this in place. We've talked about why housing is important, but the town plan really. Needs to think about in in articulating policies for the future, housing for who? What kinds of housing? Does the community need, where should most of it go? How are we going to get this done and who is going to do it? Um, particularly the last two questions uh, is something that I know is particularly important to the town. That the new town plan is much more strategic, it's much more focused on, we're going to do these five things really, really well. Rather than these fifty things that we may not get to most of. So that's where we really want to focus on, what are we going to do and who's going to do it? So S J, where do you want to go from here?
All right, so we've got twenty eight folks on Zoom. Um, and I think we're going to open it up to uh, public comment uh, specific to this topic. David's got some kind of question prompts here, maybe maybe you um, you've brought some ideas and suggestions of your own. Um, I'm gonna first just channel my inner Susan Brizzi, who is the Chair of Planning Commission, but is not here this evening. Um, and remind you that everyone here is here because they care. Everyone who cares is not here, and so let's consider those that aren't here this evening or can't be here this evening. But who are very invested in um, this topic and who are impacted directly by it. Um, listen with an open mind for areas of consensus and give space for dissenting opinions and new ideas. And especially as we're talking about updating the town plan, let's focus on on what we want the next. Uh, moving forward, what we want the next eight to ten years to look like. So for public comment, um, please don't put your comments in the chat, we want to be sure to get them entered into the public record. And not lost and be able to um, speak to them or address them specifically. Um, raise your hand if you'd like to speak and wait to be called on, um, I've got two different people who've got eyes on Zoom for me. Um, so in order to raise your hand, go down uh, to the reactions button. Um, and there's a raise hand function there. Um, we're gonna uh, use a three minute uh, time limit. Um, we've we've got a timer up here to kind of keep on track, and that's really an effort to make sure that we get a chance to hear from as many members of the public as possible. Um, but remember, uh, if if for some reason you don't get to say all the things that you wanted to say, you can follow up with Linda. Or the various other ways to do so, once we get through everybody, um, if time allows, we'll circle back to repeat customers. Okay, so I'm gonna. Keep an eye out, we've got, I don't see any hands on Zoom yet. I don't see any in the room. So maybe. We should take, oh. I see Michael, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, S J, um, I would actually, uh, I'm not a Jericho resident, as as most of you probably know. And I wanted to make sure everybody from Jericho had a chance to to say anything if they wanted to, um. I'd like to uh, be very brief, um, most of you also know, um, my association with all of this is uh, working on the Wisdom House Project. A planned senior housing um, development um, on Greg Tatro's property there in Riverside. Um, and I, first I'd like to compliment uh, both what you guys are doing and and David's presentation about it. I will say that I heard uh, much of what I would hope to have heard in all of this. Um, but there are a couple of things that I would like to call out from this specifically that both David mentioned and. Also S J had the grace to mention to me along the way, um, and that is specifically the um, needs. And this hasn't, isn't something that has typically showed up in town planning documents, but. Um, the sort of need for seniors and aging people to be able to stay in the communities that we. Uh, that we know and love and and all the networks are here, um, the place is very important to us. Um, and to be able to, but to be able to move on out of the houses where we may have raised families or where we were much younger and. Had much larger needs, um, so the ability to age in place and provide for that, I think is is really important. And I think that it is important to realize that this is more than just a quote unquote housing problem. It's the creation of a place problem, and I think that again, you're you're doing an excellent job with that. Um, as as a basis, um, there in the Riverside area and the way things are getting set up, I'm really very, very hopeful. I I think this is just a stunning opportunity and um, I I will avoid the sales pitch for the moment, I guess I'm gonna get a chance for that later on, but um. Uh, I'll be quiet now and just uh, thanks for that, and um, I'd like to make sure that that has an opportunity to get. Um, it's something that doesn't typically turn up, I I don't remember ever actually seeing it in town plans, and I actually um, have been a planner and I've seen a lot of them. So, um, I I'm very encouraged by this, thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Anyone in the room or any other, anyone else online who'd like to? Make a comment or provide some input? The other, go ahead, Jim, you want to come up to the table so they can hear you?
I, there's nothing to say. They David mentioned in one of his last presentations. The significant effect of trying to permit anything in Jericho or permit in Vermont. Uh, the permit process for the fifty years that I've been playing with it has been used as a deliberate throttle. Governor inhibitor to do what it is that you're talking about doing here. It has not improved net net, the actual natural resources preservation. Because people will play games in the process, so the skill set that's present in the process. Doesn't really accomplish its objective, I can go into a wetland and enhance the function of the wetland and improve. The whole environmental area surrounding it, the presumption that only what is existing today. Is what should exist in the future is a total fallacy because most of Vermont was uh, mowed down, there was no trees. And it was fields and was pastured, and so as a land cultivator. One of the first things I do is to try to capture the water and stop the water from flowing. So that it will infiltrate, replenish the wells, it'll feed the forest, it'll be available for everyone else. So the presumption in the whole process is that what exists today is better. Than that which those of us who know what we're doing can actually create, and that's one of the things that grossly inhibits the development of land. On a constructive basis. My family owns enough land to build twenty one houses in Vermont. And I doubt that I would live long enough to be able to permit that in Jericho. Um, and now with the interest rates that we have, I think there's some real creative solutions, we have an eighty million dollar grand list. That's probably inflated with the recent sales to a hundred and twenty, and there's no reason. To not use municipal leverage, which is half of what I would have to pay. To move forward in these objectives, but people have been paranoid in Jericho about borrowing money. Well, if the municipality can borrow it for half of the cost of the people that we'd like to move here. Why don't we do some of this stuff and create that opportunity? Focusing on spending the money today, oh my God, I don't want my property taxes to go up, well, you don't have to. If I borrow money over the next thirty years and I amortize the infrastructure that I build over the next thirty years. The people who actually use it will pay for it, so the municipal interest rate is actually lower than the inflationary. Cost of building infrastructure, so every year that you don't build the infrastructure, it will cost you more. Than if you had built it because municipal debt is lower than the cost of the inflation in the infrastructure. And over the past three years, we're talking about an astronomical number, probably thirty to fifty percent inflation in infrastructure. So if we don't lead the town in a very different way than the way we've led the town in the past. We're not going to get to where we want to get to because the functional leadership issues are not resolved. If you don't, if you're not comfortable with that, if you're not comfortable with infrastructure and you're not comfortable building things. When we were trying to put the pathway down the. Um, I got six people to sign in and say that they'll give me the three minutes.
You gotta do me like that, Jim.
I I I will go quickly, but just imagine, we're trying to build a sidewalk on the Rivers's property, connecting Jericho Center. To the high school, probably one of the most significant hazards is the kids going from the high school over to get a sandwich or do whatever. Leave the cars at home, walk. One of the big issues was the wetlands that would be adversely affected by building the sidewalk. I used to farm the Rivers's property, those wetlands are a function of poorly built. Public infrastructure, just because you're collecting the water from one side of the road and depositing on the other side. That's not really a wetland, that's poor land management. I can go in there, pipe it a little bit further and build a G I S system. So the creative solutions that those of us who actually work with the land are not being allowed, they're not even being considered. And so I think a rethink, okay, that's the end of it.
Thank you. Uh, Laura, I see your hand up. Uh, Laura, I see your hand up.
Thank you, S J. I, first of all, wanted to also thank you all for the work that you're doing. And I don't have knowledge or uh information to enhance that work. I just really hope to see. A situation that would allow. My two offspring to be here. I've already had one of my kids have to move across the state. And probably even further away. My other daughter is here in my home, which we were able to do after Arthur passed away, but um. They aren't able at this point to buy the house from me. Even though I would like to be in a smaller, less expensive setting. So everything that you're doing is directly what we, in my household and family. Have dealt with over the last several years. I just si- sincerely hope that we can bring about these changes in a relatively short. Timeframe because we are gonna lose that. Energy that makes this such a vital community if we don't. It provide ways to get younger people in here.
Thanks, Laura. So I'm wondering if um, if you all are just feeling a little overwhelmed with the idea. That we're asking you to solve the housing problem and we're not. Um, and so I think. Um, Bernie, I'm gonna go to you next. And then I think maybe we'll do a couple, we'll break this into a couple of smaller questions. That are maybe easier to handle and are our gut checks and feel a little less overwhelming. Um, like you all need to, need to carry this burden and solve this issue. Although if you have a solution, I'm sure we'd all love to hear it. But Bernie, let's go to you next.
Well, thank you. Um. I appreciate all the work that is being done and uh just. Having discussions is difficult, I think. Uh, um, there's such a big element and so many nuances to talk about. Uh, I, I, I will, I will follow up and I think a little sort of attaches to what you said is that. Um, we listened to David for forty-five minutes and lots of good information and material. Um, it, it just seems like uh to me that the, the harder part of these meetings aren't to convince. Ourselves of what needs to be done. I think the harder part, at least for me, is to understand. At least in concept, what some of the proposed. Elements are to make it happen the way we want. For example, we, I could see. The one avenue that I don't think we want to go down where a bunch of more houses get built, but they're all the same ones, kinds of ones that have been built in the last few years. Or it seems like a lot of them that be, you know, bigger, more than four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, how do we get that to the houses built to be the smaller ones? And I know you've touched, David touched on some of those elements, but I think. It's, it's. It, it seems like it's time to understand from my point. I'd like to understand better, at least at a high level, what those. Working elements are. How do we get more infrastructure in place to support the things, you know, some of the things that David talked about? And then what's, one more element more specifically is when I watch the, the target rate of the new dwelling. Construction goals that the H C stated, uh, they're, they're measurable, they're specific in design. I love that. Uh, in diversity and quantity, it's very, it's, you can put your hands around it and understand what it is and you can measure it. What I ask is where is the establishment of the housing structures um? The where of, of them deserves, I think, a measurable goal as well. And I would ask that for, to be a consideration and always talk around it. And I think there's differences of opinion. I hope we see that in writing. And you know, would, what I would ask is, and they have second recommendation of the percentage in village, village centers and the percentage outside of village centers. And then lastly, if indeed the builds since the last pan, plan. Have been higher in quantity and percentage of the total outside the village centers. Maybe or perhaps the goals in the plan need to lean, to lean heavier towards the village centers to, to reach an equilibrium. With the stated town plan in, in the state direction, I think of town centers being the primary uh growth areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie. I think that, that tees us up, David, if you wanna. If you wanna lead us in a discussion to kind of address some of Bernie's, Bernie's questions about, okay, let's, let's have the harder conversation here. We're all on board. There's a problem.
So. Do we start with? The building for who? The, the, is there broad consensus that. Housing choices for a wide range, a wide spectrum of the community is, is what we need to be looking at?
I would, I would follow what Bernie said. I think it's more building where.
Building where?
I think where we build will by default lead to what market we're trying to get to with that building. And that can be all ages, all incomes. But it does define a little more narrowly than.
Yeah, I think, I think that the, your, your spot on Eric, I think that Bernie's, Bernie's questions about where. But also some ideas about the how. Um, because I think that that, I think that that's a. That's a big black box for a lot of us.
But I think to, to your point also, we are tasked by the town select board with coming up with recommendations that will increase. The diversity of housing stock in Jericho. So that includes not just where, but also one of the steps the town should take to do that. So if we're gonna put in infrastructure, what kind, where, how does it get paid for?
Okay. All right, I'm gonna share my screen again.
Okay.
That works. Let's talk about where. So the, as I mentioned earlier, the current town plan identifies the three village areas. If I can get my cursor to show here, Jericho Corners, Riverside. Jericho Center as the, as the, the historic settlement uh. Uh, areas of the town and where uh development, new development ought to be concentrated. So. In my mind, then we look at these, these areas. In the areas that are immediately adjacent to them that aren't resource constrained. It's not floodplain, it's not, uh, it's not wetland. Um, and understand where that housing might go. In Chittenden County, the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission's regional plan. Um, has a uh, has a similar land use map. They identify areas within Chittenden, Chittenden County where. Uh, most future mixed-use development should be concentrated. What that says is that eighty percent of uh development um should be concentrated in. The, the urban and uh, and village centers. So using that same number. I might argue or might, might suggest. That that's a reasonable goal. Eighty percent of uh future development. Particularly mixed-use development is located uh in and near these village centers. So within a half a mile of the existing village centers. Um, a wide range of residential and non-residential uses. The idea of that half mile is that it's an easy walk for most people.
Are your dotted lines indicative of distance?
So the dotted lines around the village is a half mile and a mile.
Okay.
And in both cases. And I've, and. This is built on what the, the current zoning order, the current zoning districts are for village centers, village districts. And then this yellow area is low-density residential. I'm not necessarily suggesting that these, even though you're within a half mile or a mile of a village, that it's in a forested area, that that. Ought to be changed.
Sorry, sorry to be pedantic and stupid about this, but um, is there a reason why we don't have Richmond to the south? Are we already more than a mile out of Richmond Center?
Um, I, that was a question that came up, I think, at the last meeting. Um, and I haven't looked at where their village ends. And kind of done that same analysis, but it's, it's on my to-do list. What's that?
And West Bowl.
And West Bowl, which is, yeah, quite a bit bigger than Jericho Center. Yeah, out here.
David, can I ask a question also, just a carryover from last meeting? We had talked about when we were looking at. It was the meeting that we were really talking about bike pad feasibility. So that was a while ago. But there was a question of there being somewhere within here a golden triangle.
Ah, yes.
Right?
You'll see the golden triangle.
Oh, good. You're gonna come to that? Okay, good. All right.
Yeah, so.
It's really in Kimbo.
First and foremost focused uh within a half mile within and within a half mile of the village centers. Then as you expand from that into the village district, which uh extends up. Uh, up Packard Road, uh, up to Orr Road. Here's your triangle.
And where's M M U? Is it in one of the circles from Jericho Center?
So M M U is right here.
It's right outside of that.
Yes. Yeah, just, just outside. Um. Within the existing village district, mostly small multifamily homes, single-family homes with ADUs. This is probably not where you're gonna have more mixed use, but more concentrated residential use. The commercial district, come on cursor, is up here along Route fifteen. Mostly commercial, but certainly opportunities for residential uh in that area as well. And within the existing low-density residential district, the yellow. Uh, is mostly single families duplexes with ADUs. Uh, as, as an example, this is the triangle uh that Heidi mentioned. If you connect the three village centers. The area within that triangle being a, a, a place of more concentrated. Uh, develop residential development in particular. So to answer the question of where. Within these village centers and within this triangle is where most of that development should occur.
It is, my question is like, why do you think that would work? This has been the plan all along. It's been. The Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission plan all along. And it hasn't happened. And what's necessary, I mean, I think it's really easy to kind of go down the street and say, oh, twenty ADUs. Okay, the ADU gets built when someone has a need or an ADU and they build, you know, they build an ADU. But um, the, the most concentrated housing in Jericho right now, the, the most densest housing. Is not in the village centers.
Right.
It, 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 it's, if you have enough land to be able to build a, 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 a bunch of houses. Um, in a cost-efficient way, kind of if you can, if you can get it, you know, if you can get it permitted, I mean. The foothills has uh, has uh considerably more houses than Jericho Center. On half the land. Uh. Um, Lafayette and Clover Lane and Matt's Meadow have almost as many houses. As Jericho Center on much less land. So if you're talking about land use, I mean, the number of houses that, I mean, basically you're. For that vision that you're talking about doesn't work. People need to start building other houses in their backyards. And they need to, and which I'm all in favor of. I did it myself. I have an ADU. I have a second house. You know, I'm all in favor of that. But that happens when a family has a need. You know, it, it, it's not something that happens. And, and we've already. Committed most of that space to houses that are on half acre and three acre lots. So how, how, how does this happen? Had you, I mean, how, why, why would anything be any different? Than. Whatever's been in our town plan for the last fifty years. I mean, we've been saying this for fifty years.
Well, I think one, one answer, if I could just jump in, is, is infrastructure. So if the town commits to developing infrastructure in those areas, then the building will follow. It can't happen right now because there's not the infrastructure to support it. And so it's easier from the infrastructure point of view to build outside of the village centers.
It's easier what?
It, it's easier, I mean, you can't do um.
The, what else is infrastructure?
Right, correct, right. That's what I'm saying. So the difference going forward would be. We double down on the commitment to the village centers and provide the infrastructure. The town has to provide it.
So I wanna, I wanna take a, a quick pause on this conversation, which I think that we, we as. Committee members need to continue to have, but I do want to make sure that the public. Uh, feels like this is their time, um, and that they feel comfortable jumping in as well. So know that I'm looking for hands and I'm, I'm wondering uh what your reactions are to. The, the golden triangle. Um.
Let's see, finish that. Let me, let me, I'll just answer Chuck's question briefly. I'll start sharing, sharing my screen so that you can see. Uh, perhaps see, see hands, because I, I can't see any hands. In, in short, you're right. It's easy to say. In broad brush, in our, in our perfect fantasy, this is how we want this to happen. Um, and. Generally, the town plan has said, yeah, we want development to be concentrated here.
And it hasn't happened.
And it hasn't happened. So, you know, does the town plan provide enough clear direction as to. What and how that needs to happen, but ultimately you have to understand what are the barriers? Why isn't it happening? If we want it to happen there, why can't, why isn't it happening there? And, and it really does come down to, it comes down to infrastructure. You can't build, I mean, foothills has a community water system, so you kind of eliminate. The whole separation of septic from, from water distance to be able to create more compact lots. Um, and then you have process. What do the reg, what do the towns regulations, what do the, the, the state. Um, land use and development regulations, um, what barriers do they present in order to build more compact settlements?
Like, what is so objectionable about Lafayette Drive? Okay.
Exactly.
It's well, except it's to duplicate that in Jericho. It's twenty-six houses on ten acres. To duplicate that in Jericho right now, you need about three hundred acres.
Right, so why? What, what, what in the, what would it take to be able to replicate that? Pattern of development. It would take allowances in the regulations that allow for smaller minimum lot sizes. And uh increases or changes to the number of dwelling units per acre, different uh. Uh, yard setback requirements. You know, you have the dimensional requirements, the development review process itself. Where is there somebody who's willing, who has the land and is willing to go through that process that knows? This is, these are the things that I need to do. I can go to a bank and get the money to do this work and I, and I can then go do it without.
Ten acre.
And so.
Only ten acre parcels are in, in the village center.
Right.
Since we're here to talk about the town plan, how can we translate these concerns? And these goals into directives and priorities that are in the town plan and or. Is there, are the, the goals and priorities that are already in the town plan? Should they have led to this and were inadequate? So the, the kind of. Fatalistic approach that like, well, whatever we say that we want in the town plan isn't gonna happen.
Yeah, but I, I, what I take away from this and an answer to part of Chuck's question, why hasn't this happened in the existing town centers? The existing town centers are already built out. It's way easier to put in a road and a sewer system. In a place that's not been built out. If we truly want it in the village centers. We have to put in the infrastructure. Once the infrastructure is there, it becomes very easy to start building. You can take all of our lots that are out here, right on Route fifteen, that are big lots. Put in three houses because you've got infrastructure. No infrastructure. It is so much easier to go up off a Packard Road and put up twenty houses in a community septic. And not have to build anything.
Yeah, I just want to say too, Lafayette's my favorite. It's not sustainable. Lafayette does not have the space to renew their wastewater within the space that they're on. And in fifty years, that and Jericho Center will collapse if we don't build municipal wastewater. And that's just a fact. If not because of the state regulation, they'll either have to have those little rectangles in their front yards. With the big black stuff on top, alternative systems that cost fifty thousand dollars, which the people in those size homes don't have. The income, the equity, whatever arguably, to install that kind of an individual wastewater system. So there is, it's farther down the road, right? It's thirty years maybe down the road, but that. Ten acre. Little development is not sustainable. They, most of them already are on their second generation of wastewater on those tiny little lots. They will not have any more space.
Again, a further argument.
Yes, for infrastructure in the triangle area.
Why should anybody?
And, and if I can just add one more thing to that, it's not gonna happen in big chunks. You're not gonna get several ten acre parcels that are all of a sudden gonna be subdivided in order to create a bunch of new houses. You're. You're gonna get. A new house here, a new house there, you know, a a half air uh uh a one acre lot that gets subdivided into two. Or maybe gets subdivided into three, you know, it's gonna be more incremental, but that's also the kind of the scale of. Of housing, the scale of development and a pace of development that Jericho can absorb. It's not a, you know, a five hundred uh unit housing development.
Frederica, I saw your hand. Do you still wanna say something? For those who don't know, Frederica is a member of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yeah, basically, the last thing that was just said kind of. Had, now now everything's been said that I wanted to say, which is, which is essentially that, yes. To everything that's been said, we need to create, you know, we would need to create the infrastructure, we would need to create the, you know. The modification and zoning and regulations, but also. Even if if all the conditions are set, this isn't going to happen anytime soon. Because if you look at places like Jericho Center, that land is already owned. It's not like. It's not like somebody's all of a sudden gonna, you know, encounter some virgin land, but then they can develop into whatever you want them to develop into. And the land is owned by people who don't necessarily want to um, you know, have uh another house in their backyard unless. As Chuck said initially, there's a need, a personal need for them to do that. Um and and so so, you know. It's going to, it's going to be very incremental and very slow and all we can do. Actually is set the conditions and then kind of let these things kind of happen lot by lot um on on a very slow scale.
Wayne?
Um, yeah, thanks. I was just writing down what Frederickris said. It was very quite. Quite insightful. Um, no, I I raised my hand because um the uh Beck was talking about uh foothills, I believe. But um from last year or so, I did the study on the soils. There's eighty different soils. In Jericho and back thirty, forty years ago, a lot of the people in the town and the developers had grown up on farms. So they could look at vegetation and say, this place will support septic. And a lot of those places like uh foothills and other developments were developed based on that. But the the other thing we need to consider, there are maps from the uh the government that. On these pieces of land will tell you if you're going to be building on a lens of clay. Or if you've got a place on that property and where would be the best place to put that wheat field. I was just going to add that.
Bernie?
Uh. The the infrastructure is is part of this, I suppose, but I really wonder if there's some measurable way of understanding. And maybe you can't do it in the whole town, but what the water capacity is, I've heard the fire department or the chief talk about concerns with uh with firefighting. With the capacity we have today. Um so again, I suppose that ties back to the infrastructure uh discussion, but putting aside. Location and infrastructure, which we seem to keep dancing around. It seems like to me, we don't seem to be moving towards the answer to those questions. Let me ask a question different. Let's say, let's say the location is determined. And let's say that the infrastructure is determined. What then allows us to get houses built? That will indeed sell for the range, price range that we are aiming for and are the size of the units. Per amount of land that we're aiming for. In other words, you we've painted this picture of what we want. We get the infrastructure in place, we get the land determined, it's it's available and and everybody agrees to put it on that land. How then do we get the econ- economy or the economics to work or how do we help the economics work? Thank you.
Yeah, that I guys, I I hadn't paid Bernie to set us up here, but um you're you're transitioning us beautifully, Bernie. So thank you for that. Um let's talk about, let's move into how we can, we can continue. Um the where and the infrastructure conversation, but let's talk a little bit about the how and start to start building this out more and more.
So we've talked a lot about infrastructure, we talked a lot about wastewater and and one thing that hasn't been mentioned and maybe some folks are aware is that. The town actually is in the process of doing a wastewater feasibility study in the three village centers. Uh DuBois and King um has been uh hired to look into. Uh not only the soil characteristics, but the understanding the characteristics of existing uh septic systems. Their their age, their quality, to understand what is the opportunity for creating some sort of community wastewater systems in these areas. Um Bernie also mentioned water, that is an important issue. There are a number of community water systems in Jericho. But again, understanding what's the capacity and what are the limitations of those systems and opportunities to to augment that capacity. Uh will be is a very important question, but. I I think a previous speaker um put it quite well. Your job as a town primarily is to set a stage. You you set the table. You set the table through your land use and development policies and your regulations. And then ultimately the infrastructure that you bring to that table to support new development and that. That then. Makes it possible to develop, to build the kinds of things that you wanna see built. Beyond that, then the town can. Be more proactive and actually uh. Creating that housing in certain locations or with certain partnerships. Um but you have to have the other pieces in place first. You have to have the infrastructure to support it. And the regulatory process needs to, needs to make it legal, need to ma- needs to make it possible. Um so focus on. What is the market? Why is the market not building what you needed to build for you? So again, that's the infrastructure. It's the cost. Are there ways to reduce the cost? Uh of undertaking that new development. Is is there land that uh can be made available? That's either somebody's willing to sell, somebody's willing to lease, town has surplus land or uh or. Uh a nonprofit or uh other community organization has surplus land that they wanna make available. Anything you can do to reduce the cost makes it more attractive to to seeing something built. And ultimately, the market will fill the niche if you make it really easy for it to do so. So you make the process really easy to build the kinds of things that you wanna see built. Um because. Development happens, you know. Developers aren't building or. And developer sounds like it's such a such a scary and nasty word sometimes. Folks aren't building large, single family homes because, you know, that's the only thing they wanna do. That's the, that's the best way that they can make money in building something.
It's the only thing that's legal in most of Jericho.
That's a large measure of why that is, but you can also, you can build more smaller things and make a larger margin. Um and so if you allow the market to work, you don't constrain the market with uh with. Uh the lack of infrastructure or the regulatory process, you allow it to work in the areas you want it to work. Um the market will then try to fill that void. So focus on bill on the housing types and the price points that aren't being built. This is what is commonly referred to as the missing middle. It's not just a size uh or type of housing unit. But it's also a price point of housing unit, right? We know that the high end of the market is being satisfied. That's, that's always gonna happen, that's always gonna be easy. The very, very low end of the market is very, very difficult to satisfy. But there are. Nonprofit partners uh. Government and nonprofit grants and philanthropy out there that's helping to make those things work. And that's a place where the town can help facilitate that process. But you want to find ways to be, to make it legal and make it possible to build duplexes and triflexes and townhouses and cottage ports. Things that take up much less land, but are still at a Jericho scale. That the price points happen more like eighty to a hundred percent of median household income, which is seventy six to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's affordable in those price ranges. That's, again, that's part of the middle. And ultimately, who's gonna do this? The town has, as I said, the town has a responsibility for setting the table in providing infrastructure. And making sure that the land use and development regulations um are clear, they're objective and they're sensible. And. That the pro- that the regulations are are clear and objective and that the process is fair, predictable and timely. Time is really critical in this. Uh. Nothing kills any sort of, any sort of project, whether that's a government project or a public pro- uh a private development project. Quicker than bleeding it to death with time. And then ultimately. Find partnerships. Anybody you can work with to help you build the kinds of housing that you wanna build. So those are, of course, are your, the local building community and the nonprofit developers, but also community groups and organizations. You know, um. The Harvest Crossing and Underhill is one example. Wisdom House is another example of community groups that are out there trying to build. Housing in the, in the arena, in the niche that you want to create. Find ways to partner with them, find ways to support and. Uh and work with them, individual businesses and landlords, but you know. Probably not uh in Jericho, but there are good examples in other places of employer assisted housing programs. The University of Vermont Medical Center is building housing in South Burlington City Center for its uh its workforce. You know, so. I I suspect that Jericho Center Market's probably not gonna build a bunch of housing units for its employees, but maybe there's a way to partner. Uh to build housing to fill those things. Maybe there's a way to partner with the school district uh to provide housing opportunities. Um and of course, other government and philanthropy to provide funding and provide support uh to get it done. The town's role. In this is is kind of limited by your willingness to take on risk. Uh and and how far kind of down that activist role uh road you want to go. But really, it's about finding partners. Any anybody who's willing to work in this space with you and help and he- fulfill your objectives. You wanna be working to see what can you do to help?
You you looked like you were raising your hand a little.
I I'd like to underscore something that Sarah said and Chuck. There was a profound thought and complaint at town meeting that you touched on. One of the ways to turn the needle here and to make this project move forward positively is taking care of the people that are scared. About the infrastructure problems that they already have. So as we fix problems to create development opportunity.
Educating people about the amount of runway that their existing systems have.
And this is a sent, Jericho Center, there's a study, Linda's looking for it. That says all the wells in Jericho Center are within the cones of the septic system. So we got three choices and you touched on it. Fire protection. Um, we don't have fire protection in Jericho Center. We have potentially contaminated wells and we don't. So and then the fellow up on Milo White Road is begging for somebody to help him with the seventeen wells that are going dry. And you're talking about the septic systems over there. One of the prohibitions in Vermont that is available to those people is I can do best fix. Because I can build a septic system on a rock. And make it very capable, but not in Vermont, because septic systems are used as a defense against development in Vermont. Unless under Bianchi, you're qualifying for best fix and under best fix, then I can apply the technology to solve that problem. So, but if we came together as a group within the community and said, here's all our existing problems. As we create this new opportunity to solve these other problems, we're going to help take care of these people. Fire districts, municipal bonds, uh integrate them. The community has one thing that none of us as private developers can ever get is they own the connectivity. I can take affluent from Lafayette and I can pump it someplace else down the road right away, just like the Vermont gas. Just like fiber. Private guy, I gotta go buy those rights away. I gotta go buy that easement. So public, private partnerships with philanthropy is a positive way. As you solve the problems that are scaring the people, that as soon as someone realizes it causes your grand list to shrink. Because as soon as you start talking about, oh my God, this is a problem, all those property values drop. People can end up upside down because their mortgages exceed the fair market value with the adjustment. So I do think, and what I would say to you is, I'd scrap the town plan as it's currently written. It was nonsense the day it was written. The reason that we have a town center down here is because we have swift flowing water. And there was a water wheel. People built the housing around where they worked. There was a lumber mill out there. The golden triangle, the center of Jericho, is where we should be focusing on creating multimodal. And and where the resources and the existing infrastructure are is and the capacity to actually do something. The last thing in the world, any of us who actually create things as a living would do is to be hampered. By the nonsense of saying, oh, we gotta do this in the village centers. It's close to impossible. The other thing is trying to build infrastructure where you're already densely developed costs three times as much, maybe four. If, in fact, I've got to dig up stuff that's already built. If I wanna build infrastructure to solve problems, I wanna go where I can dig. Without having to spend a million dollars on lawyers, get all types of easements, rights of way, and then just imagine. They just dug silly hill up. Well, look at it. They hit a whole bunch of rock. Well, guess what? There's a lot of rock around here. If I'm out in the middle of nowhere, I can put a drill in it, drop some dynamite in it, throw a pad on top of it and blow it. Try to do that in Lafayette.
Okay, Jim.
So I think that there's some big opportunities, resource based capacity fundamental. You've got water going from Route fifteen all the way to the range, right down Packard Road. That's fire protection, you can spring off of that. So let's build some maps. That are based upon what we already have and how that can be employed. And DuBois and King started on that in the commercial center and forget commercial, it's the center of Jericho.
Wayne, I apologize for not introducing you um as an Affordable Housing Committee member the first time you spoke. But just for those of you who are new to our committee, uh Wayne is a, is an AHC member. Go ahead, Wayne.
Uh yes, thank you. Um I wanted to ask David, um I thought I heard him say that there is a. A person under contract now to study wastewater in the village centers for the infrastructure. So that that's ongoing. That's not a plan. That's actually happening, right?
That that project is underway right now with uh DuBois and King. I believe it's a grant uh from the state. Uh that's funding their work uh to do a feasibility analysis for communities uh wastewater. In in and around the three village centers. Which which gets to the, to the point that 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 Sarah was speaking to as well is that looking at the the. The capacity and the quality of existing systems. And if you have systems that are, you know, nearing the end of their useful life. Here's an opportunity to rescue, rescue them um through a community system as well.
Okay, so it'd be both for new build and for rescuing the present. Uh houses. Okay, great, thanks.
And also I agree with what Chuck said before, is like you don't, you don't maybe choose to build something else on your property unless you have a need. But there, I imagine, many people have a need. But it's cost prohibitive. And if there were municipal services, it would be much less cost prohibitive, right? So that's twenty thousand dollars right off of that, if you can hook onto a municipal wastewater system or ten thousand dollars or more. If you can get municipal water. So um I live over there. I have three point three six acres. I have no access to anything. I can wave to my neighbors who are on the gas and the water line, but I can't get it at my house. And I'm in quarter acre zoning. I could put up six duplexes in my yard with two acre flat pile of sand. But you can't get to it. So.
I do think we have a big opportunity and right now in a sixty thousand square foot house, there's a permitted use. In ninety nine percent of Jericho. But a fifteen hundred square foot triplex is a permitted use in only fourteen percent of Jericho. And I feel like anywhere that you could build a six thousand square foot house. And. Eight or ten bedrooms, you ought to be able to build five duplexes. You know, on the same lot. It's the same. Septic. You know, requirement. Uh but right now, that's, you know, that that's illegal. Uh and I think that. You know, there was a plan to build up infrastructure in the early seventies. That was the original deal of the town plan. Um that, you know, that was the fundamental deal. There was funding. And it just didn't happen. And I think that. The need for infrastructure, I guess, has been an excuse for many years. Now, I think that. The need for infrastructure, I guess, has been an excuse for many years. Now I think that, that is flipping. I've, I have confidence that people. Really kind of wanted to happen, but I think, I think it's no longer fair, uh, to put up. All the opportunities on hold in anticipation of infrastructure being built. Um, in a, in a, in a, you know, fairly small part of town ultimately than that. If, 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 if you're allowed to build a, a house three times the size of Patrick Jim with just a permit, no hearing, no DRB. You just have to have your setbacks right, you know, you can build a one bedroom sixty thousand square foot house. And, and actually a sixty thousand square foot house with any number of bedrooms and your impact fees will be lower. Than a fifteen hundred square foot triplex, which you can't build on that lot because it's illegal and that's. Any fruit in terms of just flipping, you know, kind of what's legal. And I think we need to just keep in mind, we have had, we have had draconian zoning laws. Uh, we have used the power, draconian power to, to get what we wanted, you know. We have the lowest percentage of kids on free and reduced lunch in Jericho Elementary School, but any school in the state. Basically the richest kids in Vermont and we accomplished that with zoning. We can be really aggressive on zoning to get, to get what we want. We have, we have. There's really nothing we can do to increase, uh, 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 smaller housing in Jericho that's more draconian than what has already been done. But I think there's a lot of things that we can do. I'm all in favor of the infrastructure. I'm all in favor of everything everybody's saying. I just kind of need to see it to believe it. And in the meantime, there's a lot that we can do in when we talk and, and. One of the things that I love talking with many people in Jericho is about their origin story. People who, you know, got five acres or ten acres and built a little cabin, you know, then they built something that was a little bit bigger. And they came early on, they had their kids here, the kids went all the way through the high school. They're, you know, leaders in town. They're just really have a stake here and. There's a, a young couple who's right next to me. I live in the rental district in Jericho. And, um, a, you know, a young couple paying thirteen hundred dollars for an apartment smaller than this. He's a carpenter. All he wants is a quarter of an acre to build a duplex. If he could do that, he would have an origin story. It's like how I got to Jericho. I built this thing. I built it. And my brother helped me. My father dig the hole, you know, uh, I, I use the, uh. Um, I use the, the, the rent from one apart, from the apartment to kind of support the whole thing. Um, you know, I, I don't want, I mean, I, I am all in for, all in favor of kind of, 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 of funding housing. But I, I really hope that the, the norm doesn't become, the norm origin story isn't. I got my place because I was income qualified. And there's just so many opportunities to make it possible for people to have an origin story. This need a quarter of an acre to build a place.
We are approaching, um, the end of our, of our time here. I want to make sure that, um. Folks, uh, who we haven't heard from, um. Who want to contribute, now is your chance. If, if we haven't heard from you, please, uh, raise your hand and contribute. Um, and that goes for, um, committee and commission members who haven't yet had a chance to weigh in. Um, JD, I see your hand up.
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um. It's really, I like everything that's been talked about and I can agree with a lot of stuff that David has brought forth and Chuck Lacy. Um, we have several lots that we are within the, you know, half a mile radius and are present coming to the town. Soon for a nine lot subdivision that's within that nine lottery, or half a mile radius. So, I would, if someone just wanted to reach out later on, I would love to chat to people more, you know, in depth about. Stuff that could happen and ideas that I would have.
JD Buggby.
JD Buggby.
JD Buggby.
Um, if you want to throw your, uh, email in the chat, I can grab it from there. If you want to email myself. Or Linda directly, our, our information is, uh, on the website.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, Amy Capitan, uh, go for it.
Hey, it just really quickly, uh, I've heard over the course of the evening when we're talking about accessory dwelling units. A lot of people have used the phrase, you have to have a need to want that to happen, which is I completely understand. So you have an older parent who wants to move into that accessory dwelling unit, um, whatever it might be, you want your kids to move in there. I have a want to build one of those and I don't think I'm alone. Um, and I really want to turn this on our head to say, I'm a brand new homeowner in Jericho. Um, I.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It was tough. Um, I rented for years and years, ten years since I've been out of college. The market is awful in Vermont and I'm not sure how many of you truly understand. Um, if you've been living in Jericho as a homeowner for a long period of time. Eighteen hundred dollars for a absolutely terrible one bedroom in Winuski is not a way that will keep people my age in the state. And as a lifelong Vermonter, I would like to offer that to our community. I want. The Gretchen's of our library to be able to live in the community where they work. And I want, I want our teachers to live in our community, no matter what their salary is. I want it on the record that this is not a foreign concept. Um, and I think that we as Jericho should be considering that, yes. We need the infrastructure to build lots more units, but me, I can put you on my septic, help incentivize me to do that.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Hey, yeah, I just want to say that it, some of the conversation sounds like an either or. Like we're saying, we'll do infrastructure or we'll do zoning changes and there's no reason we can't do both. So I just want to put it out there that like.
You have to do both.
Yeah, that it, it's not either or, it's a yes and.
Yes, and, and we can.
Yeah.
Incentivize people to build an ADU.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I think that, that we, we have multiple tools in our tool chest, some which cost money. And some which cost political capital and we have both to spend and we should spend both.
And, and just to be clear, in Jericho, you can put an ADU in any house you have, provided you've got septic. If you've got septic to support the extra bedrooms, have at it.
Imagine if we have municipal septic.
We could look like, uh, what goes on in California where you are not allowed to have single family housing units anymore.
Yeah, I, I also challenge the assumption that we can't build more where we are, like just around here. Uh, Sunnyview, most of those lots are.
Saying that we can't, I'm just saying we're not going to achieve it. That's limits.
Yeah.
What we can do.
Yeah.
Limited to that. But on that golden triangle, there's a whole lot of stuff off our roads. It's pretty good sized lots that aren't developed.
So much.
On both sides of our road.
Got four minutes before I, I have to move to Affordable Housing Committee staff. Bernie, did you have something, something new you'd like to add?
Yes, I asked the, uh, gentleman at the, uh, one of the, uh. Uh, planning commission or, or the, uh, DRB meetings for the acorn development on, uh, Brown Trace and Governor Peck. And I said. Can, can, they're developing the land for, for develop, for developers to come build houses. So the, I asked him, can the lots be smaller? Can the houses be smaller? And they, and they said, well, look, we're not going to be building the houses, but when talking with the prospective people that would come in and do the builds. They're saying, it's not, even with us doing all the development, right? And this is right nearby. It's not economical for them to do so and they, and the market is demanding, you know, is a better share or price or whatever. To build the bigger houses that, so I would ask, are we asking like five or six developers to come in or just send us a note and tell us? If we had infrastructure in place and if we had the land available. David said, we need to make it easier for them. What would, what would they need? So that when they, they come into looking, building something on these. Lots that are ready to go like that one, like those lots are on Governor Peck. What would get them to incent them to build these smaller houses? I just, I just keep seeing it coming all back to, we get those other problems resolved and we're still going to have huge houses built. I mean, do, can we put a, a moratorium, for example, on the bigger houses? I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I, I still think economics is going to be looked at. Or the developers are just going to, they're going to say, okay, you made it easier, but I'm just going to still build a bigger house.
Can I ask a question, David? Well, my offices are in Winuski. And so I'm driving down Route fifteen, whenever I go into my office, it's three plus days a week. And I have been noticing over the last three or four years. The, as a friend of mine who lives in Winuski says, the mysterious fires that are taking all the old buildings. And the rapid replacement of them with something much bigger and also more affordable. Is there a similar market potential in Jericho? Is there enough demand for the kind of houses that are going up, the apartment buildings, three level buildings and all of that in Winuski? To happen here? Could they happen in our Jericho Town Center if we had infrastructure?
I, I think, I'm not sure that Winuski's a good example because this, I'm not sure that the scale of fits. Jericho, what Jericho is, let alone what I think Jericho wants, but, uh, more so. Is building a lot of housing. Probably at a scale that is more in tune with I think you'd want to see in Jericho. So you can build, you know, what, again, what's going on in Winuski is, you know, they can build to scale. They can build, you know, three, four, five story buildings. They have the infrastructure already in place to support all of that. And they have the regulatory process that's facilitating all of that to develop.
So would those developers be willing to come in and build on a smaller scale? Based on your experience in the market as someone who works with them.
Yeah.
I, I, would they be willing to come in here?
I sus, I suspect that most of them are pretty well tapped out building what they're building. There, they're not familiar with Jericho. You're, I think you're, you're better off. Working with folks who are familiar with the community and helping them scale up. And again, it's, it's going to be that. You know, a handful of ADUs here and there, some larger lots that get subdivided, it gets subdivided and they put it in the triplex instead of a single family owned. So, you know, I, I'm not sure that that scale is replicable here probably for variety of reasons.
Um, I'm gonna, um, eat into the Affordable Housing Committee meeting's public comment time. Um, because, uh, we've got another member of the public who we haven't heard from yet. So I want to add, uh, welcome Dave Gantor.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to add what the, the talk about Winuski. I, I went to a panel discussion. They had the town, uh, the, the city manager and she, she had three of her, uh, Jesse Baker and three of the people from her government. And the president of the construction company that built the Cascade. These are going into Winuski, it's the one in her left. Um, it was built several years ago. The, the point that they wanted to bring out was form-based code. The contractor said, I think that, that cost about nine million dollars or so for thirty some units. The contractor's point, and their point was form-based code allowed them to, uh, cut, uh, four or five months. Off of the development time, so just to pay note.
Um, Laura.
Thank you. The, um, conversation brought to mind the fact that. I think Bill Butler and Michael Almond referenced that already. There's at least twenty of, uh, seniors. Who have voiced interest in Wisdom House. Now, my personal situation, I would probably be selling my. House to my kids, but my daughter has a six year old and a two and a half year old. That's the family we want to have come into this three to four bedroom house. If we twenty households are interested in a situation like Wisdom House. And we do have a contractor who wants to build it, then we freed up twenty houses. And I, I believe, and I don't know if Michael's still on, but I believe the intention is to do fifty units. Um, I, I'm hoping that they aren't just a big box like we have. As you go into Winuski, that they are more of the cottage or townhouse. Uh, so that there is a sense of a community there, not just a place to stick us for the rest of our days. Um, but I think we have the interest, we have a contractor. Running up against complications with wastewater, with zoning. And you all are on the right path to make this happen. So, again, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm in line. To get out of my house and into one of those, but I'll probably end up doing an ADU here. Because of the timing delays that have affected Wisdom House. And, and then maybe I'll still go there and the ADU becomes something that Mariah and Steve can rent. To someone else who needs an, a place as they're starting their life and not yet ready to own a home. Every one of those units is going to get occupied. There is no question about it. I, I heard on, uh, VPR a few weeks ago, forty-five. A hundred units needed in the state in the next decade. Forty-five thousand, I was going to say that and then I thought, no, that's just too big, but it's, whatever it is, it's huge. And we can bring that here and bring our diversity. Maybe even some of the folks of the Chittenden asylum seekers, um. Group that, that are so, so in need of housing and so. Willing to be part of a community that would welcome them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurel. So I, I've, uh, stretched as much time as I can possibly give to, uh, to this discussion. I want to thank everybody for coming, for participating. I'm going to switch over to Affordable Housing Committee business. You are all welcome to stay and listen. Um, well, you won't hurt my feelings if you leave, uh, if you didn't get a chance to participate or if, uh, you know. Tonight at three in the morning, you wake up and sit up in bed and think, oh, that's the thing I should have said. Please, uh, reach out to myself, reach out to Linda, um, come to another one of the planning commission's working sessions. I look forward to seeing you all at the community forum, May third. Um, and thank you, everybody. All right, Affordable Housing Committee members, um, I am going to take us through, um. Two of the agenda items that I really need to hit on tonight. Um, and I want to see your faces, Stacy, Frederica, Wayne, you guys just go there. Okay, great. Um, so there's two things that I want to touch on. One is, um. April is Fair Housing Month. Um, and each April, uh, Vermont celebrates the nineteen sixty-eight passage of the Fair Housing Act. With a series of public education and art events to raise awareness about housing discrimination in Vermont. And the positive role that inclusive and affordable housing plays in thriving communities. I'm not aware of us participating in any of these, uh, Jericho participating in any of these events in the past. Um, but I think that there's one way that we could, uh, get Jericho involved that's kind of fun and exciting, which is. Um, through a program they have called Heart and Home Community Art Project. It invites artists of all ages, um, to share what home and or inclusive community means to them. Um, so you can have a series of prompts to encourage the group or the individuals to. Uh, on their creative process to kind of reflect on the prompts and create some artwork. Um, good night, guys. Thank you. Um, and so the, the overarching, um, fair housing of Vermont. Has kind of a community gallery, art gallery, where you take a picture of the art and submit it to that, uh, community art gallery. That's like a website and then some items get drawn, uh, for prizes. I'm not sure what the prizes are. But, and I think it would be neat if we did a couple of events around town. Um, a couple of group art making events as well as encouraging people online to make their own kind of art at home. Um, and submit to a Jericho specific gallery on the town website. Um, and then I've also spoken with Catherine McMains about, um. In the town hall, there's, uh, art exhibit space, um, and there isn't anyone slotted yet for the May. Uh, the month of May for the next exhibit to go up. And so we could, uh, we could exhibit some of the art that's created as, uh, Fair Housing Month. Community, what is it called? And so we could uh, we could exhibit some of the art that's created as uh Fair Housing Month's community, what is it called? Oh, Heart and Homes. Um, so it's something that I think might be fun and a way to kind of get out into the community, maybe get um some young folks involved as well. The DEIC, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee met last night. Um, I proposed um that we do the project along with them. Um, and they voted to sponsor the project, so. Um, and by sponsor, it just means like publicly endorse it and put in man hours. It doesn't mean.
Let me suggest that we include stories. I mean, stories like, you know, stories like laurels. You know. You know.
Yeah.
I I, you know, I I think they're meaningful and we can start just collecting those stories. Um. You know, I I think they would fit right in with an exhibit and um, you know, I think they're, I think they're valuable to collect.
The um, the website of previous years, um, previous galleries. There are many where there are stories like that. There's a, you know, there's a picture and then there's a story about someone's housing story or. Or direct answers to the prompts that are given along with the art project. Um, so this is something that um I'm looking for a motion to have the Affordable Housing Committee officially sponsor. Um, the project and then maybe one or two volunteers to help myself and a DEIC member. Um, do some brainstorming, maybe hook up with the local libraries, um, maybe some of the school groups, I don't know. Haven't thought this all the way through yet, but um. To meet with us and kind of do some brainstorming and kick off a couple of events in April. And then have an exhibit happen here uh at the town hall in May. Does anyone think it's a terrible idea?
I'm I'm happy to sponsor it if I can do much to help with it once I've, I'm sorry, I'm happy to. Move the motion that we sponsor that. I'm not sure how much I can contribute to making that happen once it's so moved and approved.
I I hear a a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Was that you, Stacy?
Yeah.
Awesome. Uh, I'll take a quick vote. All those in favor, I?
Alright.
I, I. Wayne, that was an I. Frederica, are you still?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I see you. Okay, great. Um. Anybody want to volunteer to give me a hand?
Like I said, I'll put the motion forward. I wasn't going to jump in and volunteer.
I heard you. Don't worry.
Away for most of the time, but I I my interest would be on the story side.
The story side? Stacy, was that a yes or a?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, uh, I I I could help with the story side. Uh, is this supposed to be like relative to ourselves because uh. It talks about someone with a little piece of land that builds a house. That's basically what I did here. We lived in the first floor for. Three years until I built the second floor. I mean, is that what you're looking for?
I mean, I would love for you to make a piece of art and share your story if you'd like.
How old were you?
Uh.
Oh my God, guys, no, it's eight fifty seven. It's eight fifty seven. I have one more thing on the agenda.
Yeah, I was thirty years old. I finished it when I was thirty five upstairs.
I think. Uh, yeah. Great story. We'd love to hear it.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Stacy, I will reach out to you. Um, Chuck and Wayne, I will reach out to you about stories and as this uh idea. Forms and is more concrete, I will share details with the group. Um. The next thing I need to. Talk about is the April agenda. Um, April is our planning and kind of organization meeting, so we will be voting on officers and appointing liaisons. Um. I am hoping to continue in my role as chair, but I say that not to discourage anyone else who maybe wants to try their hand at it from from throwing their hat in the ring. Um, but I I do intend to run again as chair. Um, we have in our charter um a position for vice chair, but I'm not sure that that has ever been filled in my history on the committee. Um. So I I would love to share the leadership responsibilities with a vice chair and also have, if I'm the chair, sorry. And also have someone who can step in um and run meetings or be the point of contact and speak on behalf of the committee uh if. That when that happens, when we're called upon for that. Um, and then a clerk, which Wayne has is currently doing. Um. Would love to have Wayne again or anyone else. If you're interested in any of those positions, please send me an email and let me know by um, I don't know, a week before our April meeting so that we can. Vote on that. Um, the other thing. As far as liaisons go, that can be uh as involved as you want it to be. I think the minimum requirement that I'm looking for here is someone who's kind of keeping up. Keeping tabs on the agendas and the minutes of meetings to make sure that if there's any kind of housing. Related or adjacent stuff that we're aware of what's going on and that also you form some kind of relationship with the chair of the committee so that you're a point of contact. So they feel comfortable reaching out and vice versa for conversations or scheduling joint meetings or whatever. Those committees would be the Conservation Committee, the Energy Task Force and the DRB. Um, Planning Commission, we've got Eric and also whoever is chair. We work so closely with Planning Commission. I think it makes sense for the chair to continue to be a uh.
I I I I would be happy, delighted to take on Conservation and uh Land Trust.
Um, so. Think about those things. Um, they will be. I will be looking Conservation and Land Trust, I heard you. Um, they will be on. The agenda in April that we'll need to.
Wait, wait. There, what were those again? There was Conservation. I heard.
Conservation Committee, Energy Task Force, DRB. I think you're right, Chuck, Land Trust should probably be on that list. Um, Planning Commission and Select Board between Eric and whoever the chair is um. Those kind of, those kind of go together, so. Conservation Committee Task, uh Energy Task Force, DRB. Land Trust.
Okay, well, Chuck wants Land Trust, I'll take Conservation or.
He wanted both, so you guys can fight about it in April.
Okay.
Um, okay, I. Uh, it's nine oh one. I'm going to table approving the February minutes until the April meeting and ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, Dave, go ahead, Dave. Sorry.
Is the, is this committee going to be discussing the railroad street property and what advice is to be given to? Select Board from this group?
Which property?
The Railroad Circle.
Oh.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance, we haven't had a chance to talk about that in committee meeting. So yeah, I will put that on the agenda for.
I was wondering about putting it on the agenda. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
No, that's a good point. I'll put it on the agenda for April. Thank you, Dave. You are an honorary committee member.
I'm I'm perfectly happy to move that we approve the minutes. I read them all. They look fine.
Haven't read them. Um, I I I can be overruled. I haven't read them. I can abstain. No, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? That's really what I'm looking for. Really?
Chuck had his hand up, the question.
Thank you, Stacy. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Eric. All those in favor.
Bye.
I thank you, everybody. It's nine oh two. We made it. Bye, everybody. Stay safe and warm.
Great job.